I'll wait in the line.
There it has.
I always gotta kinda push it, then you got a little ticket a little bit to get it to.
Okay Karen.
I'll keep an eye on it. We will call the meeting to order. I will let the Coleman's come in first.
You started.
And then go ahead and stay standing because we're gonna start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming out everybody. Start with the approval of the agenda. Any deletions, corrections, questions? Paul, looks good. Ryan?
Nope.
We have a couple things here. We're gonna add F4 council action sheet for recommendation. Add F2C, the Minnesota Housing MHFA information. And we're gonna remove F1A, the landscape ordinance. There wasn't a Cormat PMZ to bring that to us. And then we're gonna remove F1B, the Kisseling Fence application has been withdrawn. So those are struck from the agenda. With that, I entertain a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Ryan, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. Questions, comments for administration on the consent agenda? Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, no visitors tonight. Are you filling out a visitor card?
I was, yeah.
Well then, then you just bring that up when you're ready and we'll wait for you. Oh, is it for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, then just hold on to it and wait for that.
We'll have you come up during the public hearing. You don't need to, that's just for items that aren't on the agenda, so no worries. No problem.
You're good. Yep, so just wait for the public hearing, we'll get that. Alright, thank you. Um, Mayor's report. The only thing I got there is just reminder that March 9th, we scheduled our work session for that day. So you now get, sometime we'll get agenda put together for that.
Yeah, I think we're looking at 8:15 for start. And the Chamber of Commerce has requested to go first. They have St. Patrick's Day in Casson that day. There are some events for that too. So I think they're gonna go 8:15 a little before 9:00 and then we'll continue. I know Brandon let us know that he may not be able to attend that day, but he'll provide us with some updates and we'll try and share that information in the council. So we're finally in the packet right now, but yeah, we can get down.
Okay.
If there's anything in particular you wanna handle.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you. Onto the public hearing regarding the daily sirens. So, any comments, questions from council before we open the public hearing? Or wait till after the public hearing?
Till after.
Okay. With that, we'll open the public hearing regarding the daily sirens in town. We do have some stuff in the packet that was submitted. Everybody had a chance to look at that. We'll open the public hearing and does anyone have something they'd like to share?
Aye.
Come on up Chuck.
Hi everybody.
Chuck Coleman. And my wife Sally. Sally, long life resident, lived with sirens all her life. And in the past, we, we used to live along Highway 14 there and there was a siren there and there was an issue of loudness. And the situation was taken care of at the time. But, uh, I didn't really come prepared for this, but tradition, I mean, everybody that's been here for quite a while gets kinda used to sitting at home and, oh, it's lunchtime. Oh, it's dinner time. Oh, it's time to go home, where are my kids, you know? It's just kinda nice to have it out there. Got anything more?
Other than when they did have the siren that was at the end of Third Avenue, they had said that they were moving it and they did. They moved it across the street to the trailer court so that's how to those families issue. I know, um, we do have to accept change and I understand that. But, when you have things that are part of your life for 60 years, it is hard for change. And having those sirens is a part of the Casson heritage of, you know, what we have here in town. So, I know it's, times are different, but as a resident all my life of Casson, I would like to see them stay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Anything you, for the public hearing regarding sirens? Nope, okay. Uh, with that, we'll close the public hearing since we don't have any more public here that wanted to speak. And I'll open it up for council discussion.
I would like to recognize that we did get one very well-written comment with well-argued points from a member of the public about their displeasure since they live directly across the street from one. And I appreciate the fact that they took the time to not just write a letter and complain, but set forth some valid reasons to reconsider the sirens. The best practices information that is contained in the packet from, forgive me, I can't remember. Was it Olmsted?
Yeah, so I did include that, just so, you know, that's kind of the guidance that they use for siren usage, so yeah.
It was, it was interesting to see that apparently the best practice recommendation is to move away from having sirens that are used simply for time reminders because there is concern that people will develop sort of an immunity to hearing the sirens and ignore it or become confused as to why the siren is going off. That said, I personally don't have strong feelings one way or the other, but unlike the lady that wrote us the letter and Paul, I don't live directly under a siren. So I can see, truly, I can see both sides of it. When the sirens were not working, yeah, I did lose track of time. I freely admit, you know, you kinda go, oh, yep, noon, time to go walk the dog or, you know. So, I don't, I don't have strong feelings on it. I truly was expecting a lot more folks to come out and share their views and there's nobody here sharing their views.
Well, except Chuck and his wife. We're very important people.
Right, no, and I understand that. Let me rephrase.
Our commissioner, all-powerful over here.
We do have folks. We have two folks that came. I was actually expecting a whole lot more people based on all of the comments that were being made on Facebook about this. But I guess those feelings weren't strong enough to take the time to come and express them in person or write a letter.
And I've had conversations with some of those folks and same thing for me. I don't really feel strongly either way, but when you say, we should really keep them, my only thing I can come up with is tradition. Right, I mean, that's, but that's not really the most compelling reason to keep them. And then you hear people that don't like them, there's reasons why. And to me, the, the safety one, it never really crossed my mind until you read some of the things where, and I like how they moved their siren to 10:00 AM for their testing because there's very rarely any storm warnings at 10:00 AM in the mornings where they chose that. So that way, if you do hear the siren outside of that, you know that there's something up. So, I can't come up with, I tried to come up with a reason the other day of, hey, we really have to keep these and here's three reasons why. Just feel really strongly why and something behind it and I just can't come up with it besides tradition. So, that's just my, not that tradition's not important, but like Sally said, you know, some things change and we just have to move forward with that, so.
I do think that we should consider moving our tests to 10:00 AM because that is an extremely valid point that if we're gonna have bad weather and in the 20 years that I've lived here, the, you know, the bad weather gets earlier and earlier and earlier in the afternoon if we're gonna have a bad storm. It used to be, you know, it wouldn't come until four in the afternoon, but it is getting earlier. I do think that that would be a better time to test it, once a month like everybody else does. I mean, I know statewide, the time is one o'clock and that's why everybody does it then.
Dodge County actually is the one that triggers that one o'clock siren.
Oh, so we don't have.
Certainly, I mean, well, we can communicate with them. I mean, it's a matter of them pushing a button. So if, if we felt like we wanted it at 10:00 AM, I mean, you know, he references Matt Moss in his email. I mean, we talked to Matt and say, hey, this is something we'd like to see changed. Technically, right now, they're the ones who trigger that one. The, the other sirens are set on timer, so they're kind of automatic. But, I mean, I don't know, if that's something we'd like to do, I'm glad to reach out to Dodge County and say, hey, we'd like to do it at a different time. That, I can just really understand that.
But the fatigue thing is legit. When, you know, growing up down south, if you hear that siren, it's one of, in the eighties, it was one of two things. Either you were about to be blown away by a tornado or the Russians were coming. And, you know, the first couple of years that we lived here, when I heard it go off, it was like, whoa! But you do get used to it after time. But again, unlike Paul, I don't live directly under the thing. And I would defer more to the folks that do live directly under it because they are the ones that have to listen to it the loudest.
I mean, to that point, I know that the site that, that's across from Paul's house, we are looking at moving that siren. So mostly because of the coverage. You know, so that siren will be probably moving out to an area closer to Public Works, which will eliminate the immediate need by anyone who's a residential member of the public to deal with the sound, because it can be very loud next to the house. So I think that, with that change, I mean, I don't know that it wouldn't actually be as much of an effect to him personally, unto his, you know, his family. But, the point remains. You know, and I tried to kick it around thinking about like, well, do we keep like one of the siren times? We keep like a 10 o'clock, you know, curfew? That's the only one I could come up with that even served, kind of served a purpose still. It's like, okay, the kids are out in the street, they know, they know it's 10, they better get home. Other than that, I mean, it is hard to, it's hard to justify now that everybody has a phone, you know, in their pocket, you know, it isn't even 15, 20 years ago. So I mean, very salient points I think you're bringing out.
I'll just say is, uh, there's nowhere in my house that I will not hear the siren when it goes off. But honestly, I don't notice it usually anymore because it's just something that happens every day. But after reading this letter here, which I never thought about either, uh, that's, that's the problem with it, is the fact that I don't notice it. And the whole point is when the siren goes off, you're supposed to notice it. And I don't notice it anymore. And, uh, which I guess is a good and a bad thing. But, um, I would say that the 10:00 PM siren is the worst of the sirens because I've got young children who should be sleeping by then. So the 10:00 PM siren is, like I said, you can't hide anywhere in my house to avoid it. The 10:00 PM siren's a risk that my kids are gonna wake up, you know? So, um, that one is the most concerning to me.
I grew up here and I understand the tradition part of it. I mean, my parents said when the siren goes off at 10, you come home. If you want it at 5:30, sometimes you have dinner, sometimes you're not. But every family's the same. Not every family has dinner at 5:30 now. And I teach at the middle school. I would say 90 to 95% of students have cellphones. I'm not telling anyone to buy a cellphone for their kid. What I'm saying is, kids that need to know what time it is and when to be home, have the tools already to have them. Younger kids under the age of 10, 12, probably shouldn't be out past 8, 9, 10 o'clock at night on a school night in October, in March. Relying on a siren, that's a warning siren for weather, to go home or to have dinner or to have lunch. And the article does talk more about the fact that we're only supposed to hear them when we're outside. We're not supposed to hear them when they're, when we're inside. It is a warning to find a safe place when you are outside. They are warning sirens, not farmer sirens for lunch. They are not sirens to tell you when to go into your home to go to bed. They are to warn you of danger. And if that's the purpose of we're spending money, to purchase them as an additional warning for residents, I don't see the need for them to go off three times a day. Do we need to test them? Yes, we had a week where they didn't go off because we, they malfunctioned. People didn't notice it because they're so used to just hearing it.
I noticed.
And, but some people didn't. You saw, I saw both, I noticed it versus I didn't notice it. If you live in a certain power town, you didn't because we're not servicing you well enough. In my area, Northwest, we're not serviced well enough to hear it anyway. So, did we notice? No, but we also don't hear it when we're supposed to. So it's, I get the tradition side of it, but I've lived here long enough where I can say I watched Digger's Close. I watched the Veterans Park change extremely much over the last 30 years. I've seen a lot of change in our community. Stop signs to stoplights to roundabouts, right? Tradition is what you make it. And I don't know if a siren used for weather is a tradition versus me getting together with my family for Christmas and Thanksgiving, that's a tradition. I don't know if this is a tradition or just something we like to use to keep track of our day. And that's what a clock is for.
Dan, anything?
Well, I don't hear it anyways, so it doesn't, I'm not a cow.
As our debate goes here, I mean, we can take action on this tonight and if, if the action is to suspend the sirens, they can always be restarted. And if it's a, evaluate in six months, you know, whatever, a year and then they can always be restarted at any time. So I think a couple of things we should discuss then is, do we wanna suspend the current system? And then the second thing would be, we still need to test them. We should defer to EMS or whatever for that time. But I really like what Olmsted County had to say about the 10:00 AM and the reasoning why behind it. So, um, with that, I think the first thing is, is there action that anyone wants to take regarding the, the whole system?
I would make a motion that we suspend the, the daily scheduled sirens.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
For discussion. Okay, I'll call the question then. All in favor of suspending the current program? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we do appreciate your public comment tonight. I'm really, I'm, uh, happy you came. So it's nice, it's nice to hear from people in person. Uh, the second thing is, now that we've done that, is would we defer to our police department, emergency coordinator of the county, but 10:00 AM sounds like.
I mean, that's the recommendation from council. We'll certainly reach out to Matt Moss at the county and say, hey, you know, we'd like to see it changed. And if that's, if that works for them. If it doesn't, I'll bring back the reasoning that they have that are not doing it.
Yeah.
But I would, I can't imagine that it should be a huge issue for them to push the button at a different time. And then, once we know that, what we're gonna do is we'll put that out to the public.
Sure.
As much as we can, because obviously it'll be a change for people. It'll take a little while to get used to it, so.
So the first, is it first Wednesday?
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month at 1:00. That's pretty much statewide. Do we have control to change that time or we have?
The first Wednesday or?
First Wednesday is 1:00. It's gonna happen regardless.
I can reach out to Dodge County. I don't know that answer tonight.
Because that's the only time Pine Island does it.
Right. And that's actually, like I said, standard procedure for the state statewide has been that typically. Obviously not in Olmsted County anymore, but I think that's kinda historically what they've done, so.
Okay.
I'll bring back any information I get, certainly, so.
One last question. The controls that, that are presently located at the police station, are they simply for the, the three times a day that we're presently doing? Like if there was an actual emergency, will Dodge County's stuff?
Well, so Dodge County could trigger it or you can trigger it right there at the site. So historically, those controls were actually in the fire hall. So the fire department acts as the spotter group for severe weather. So typically, when with the construction completion of that project, we'll see those moved back to the fire department. So we will be able to trigger it at the fire department there still as part of our historic, you know, kind of our regular process.
But the, the question or the point was raised by one person that, well gee, we would never have known that the controls weren't working if we didn't have the three times a day siren sound.
Sure.
So gee, isn't it a good thing that we test it three times a day? And I'm just trying to understand, even if our local controls are not working, is the main switch located in the county?
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, no, they triggered those when that was not operating properly.
Okay.
So yeah, no, the county would always be able to trigger that.
Okay.
And it's, it's not so much that they're not working, it's a matter of, you know, it was moved over and the power was brought in from outside the building, so there were some issues with that. So it's a short-term, it was a short-term fix for a problem. We didn't wanna move the controls somewhere else, so we wanted to keep them downtown. And so I think when it gets moved back, I think, I know Charlie's had the, the company up there already taking a look at them, so.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks everybody, appreciate it. Onto the ED report.
Alright, so the first thing I have is the Ready Investor Communities. The EDA did make a recommendation at our February meeting to become a Ready Investor Community. That came about after a visit from John Wade and Kirk Buestrom from Ready. They came in November to present about the opportunity. The direction after that meeting was to get some feedback from current member communities, which right now include Byron Chatfield, Plainview, Pine Island, and Spearsville. And based on the feedback from those cities, the EDA did ask staff to reach out to Ready and see if they would consider investing in Ready for the first half of 2024 rather than the entire full year commitment. And so included in your packets tonight, I've got a couple of items relating to the Ready Investor Communities. So you can see some of the highlights of investing in Ready include a representation on various boards. And probably the most, most beneficial would be to get some of Casson's properties listed on their website so that they can hopefully be developed soon. And so, because it would just be a partial investment in Ready, the full cost is $5,000 for the full year. But they have agreed to allow us to invest for the first half at $2,500. And so that would basically allow us to reevaluate six months from now whether or not we would like to continue with it. So, you'll see the invoice included in there for $2,500, which I would ask the council to.
Thanks Ian. Any questions for Ian on that? Okay, I entertain a motion. Did you have a question?
I was just curious how many properties we would be advertising on there?
Uh, well, let's see. We've got the EDA lots, the cemetery land. We've got a residual lot in the Vale property. Well, just the city-owned properties.
And developers will be able to advertise it too.
Right, in addition to all the other. And it does fit right in with our EDA goals of expanding commercial and industrial growth and also collaborating more with our nearby smaller cities.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, so, um, the EDA is recommending that we go ahead and do this? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
And this is using?
EDA.
EDA's existing budget?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's out of the advertising budget.
So this isn't on top of anything that they've already got?
Nope.
Okay.
Other than outreach for the year.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Thanks Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Onto, okay, keep going Ian. You're still up.
I've got the 2023 annual report for the EDA. So you've got the full report included in your packets tonight, but I'll, I can go over some of the highlights included within. As you know, the Vale property is now fully, well, is plotted further along now. So we've got the one lot that is the site of the Park Apartments by Hamilton, which was completed and the city was able to support through tax payment and some of the infrastructure as well. Another lot is for their option lot and another lot is for the sand companies, which is moving along and the city was able to support through TIV. And then, but we use one residual lot in that area, which there's already some interest in developing that one as well, so that's pretty exciting to move forward with that. We've had three different businesses take advantage of the business facade improvement program, including Caribou Enterprises, which is the Domino's and preferred heating and cooling building. Pedals to Metals and 301 also took advantage of that, so that was pretty exciting. We were able to support them with their projects. And then a couple of other exciting things, including the RFP for the cemetery land that was issued. We're still moving forward with that process. A couple of different studies, including the parking study and the Casson Parks survey, which are good tools to use as we think about making improvements to downtown and to our park system. And then also, um, membership in the rural entrepreneurship ventures, which Casson was fortunately selected to participate in. And we are now officially a part of it in 2024, which will see some positive growth in our, uh, economic ecosystem growth, yes. Alright, that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thanks Ian. Uh, we added the Minnesota Housing MHFA information.
Sure, and this is mostly just to let you know, we're looking at applying for some grant money through their, the new housing program. And this would potentially be to help it pay for infrastructure in the southwest property. We had the folks from the Senate Housing and Homeless Committee, were here last fall, if you recall, and, uh, so this program's out now and we're hoping that it might be an opportunity for us to, to help pay for that. We know that's a, got a lot of infrastructure costs. I know Brandon's been very clear, you know, he's looking at water extension and road reconstruction, things like that, things that right now are not, not gonna be funded through the city itself. But just wanted to include that so you kinda see what we're working on. It's one of the priorities that Ian will be working on this year with, continuing our housing focus.
Any questions on that for Tim?
Yeah, just glancing through this, is this funding look like something you've got a good chance of getting?
Well, I think so. It's a two-to-one match, so for every dollar you put in, there's a $2 match, they'll give you two. So I mean that, and I think we may talk about some opportunities to raise some of those funds for the match later in this meeting, maybe during our closed session. So, but yeah, I think, I mean, the way they described it is it's, it's BDPI, which is the Business Development Program that Deed has used for years for their industrial parks. It's BDPI for housing. So it supposedly is supposed to be very user-friendly. And I know, you know, Brandon's very familiar with that program. It's interesting, some cities have used it, like I think Lesser Prairie was just granted some money and there was one other area, city that, that got some funding. In the last five years, Kenyon got money from BDPI. So hopefully, if it's, if it's that kinda program, we've got a good niche. We're in the outstate, we're not in the metro. You know, that's where a lot of the money's focused, is in the outstate part of Minnesota.
Okay. And one of the things I see in here is evidence of employer support. I, I assume we've got that?
As part of building this checklist, we'll be going out and getting some letters. Uh, one big employer that is included will be the school, for example. You know, we'll go and get letters from them before we submit a packet.
Okay, cool.
But it's also within 25 miles, so it doesn't.
Oh, within, oh, okay, so we can go quite a ways out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Questions? Anybody else? Okay, thank you. And number four, council action sheet, and that's regarding the ANA.
Number three, we have that one.
Oh wait, Park Board, no, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Skip that. Uh, Casson Aquatics Center Reprimand Policy. Park Board's recommending that this be the policy, is that correct?
Yeah, we talked about this, our last Park Board meeting, which probably would've been in January. One of the things that Ben had talked about with Julie, the manager last year and this year, were kids that are not behaving well. And how do we make sure that we have a safe welcoming facility for all students and kids that are going there and adults? So with adjustment to the Reprimand Policy, we made it a little easier and a little sooner for unruly patrons to be asked to leave and then asked to leave for longer periods of time.
Okay. Questions for Park Board?
Oh, go ahead.
We gotta make sure we post this on, at the pool.
I'm, I can bring that to Ben, I'm sure they will. I think we need to post it online and when you get your membership.
Because people might already have memberships and then.
Have we started taking any money yet this year? I don't think we have yet.
I don't think we've gotten the.
It's usually later in the spring.
But it's, it's gonna probably next, next month, starting in March, usually when you start to see that gin up.
Is it something that could be turned into like a part? If you buy your membership online, you have to like click here that you acknowledge that you have read these policies? Because it was a problem last year.
Yeah, I'm sure that could be added to the, certainly added to the website and I can check with them on if they can add as a pop-up for them.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because that way the parents can't say, I didn't see it.
Well, and if it's hanging up at the pool all the time.
No, but.
No, no, I agree.
I'd like people to say, yeah, no, you did, because you checked a box.
Well, as soon as, as soon as they lose their free daycare, parents will complain. So that's.
And that's why I've said it.
Yeah. So it's, it's, we have 15, 16, 17-year-old kids managing our pool, not managing, but lifeguarding our pool. And they don't need to be harassed. Harassed and having to deal with constant issues by kids around their same age. It's a safety concern for others at the pool. With large numbers being at the pool, it was just, it's time to buckle down a little bit more With large numbers being at the pool, it was just, it's time to buckle down a little bit more, and if you can't handle it, you're not allowed there.
Is there a decision-maker who has the final say, or is it any of the lifeguards can tell?
Uh, the lifeguards, uh, after the second offense, I believe they have to, they can, I believe they talk to the supervisor, so they talk to Julie and the, and the managers there. And then I think they need, do need to talk to Ben about it, to let Ben know in case that he needs to deal with anything as well.
Okay.
It does say no refunds after your fourth.
Sure.
Yep. You're not getting your money back. You, yeah.
Okay. If Park Board and Aquatic Center staff think they can enforce that, I'm, I'm, I have no problem with it, so.
I mean, you know, realistically, they'll just deactivate the membership, you know, so it will be, I'm sure we're gonna get feedback, but, you know, with anything you do, any changes you make, you're always gonna get some feedback. So we want to make sure it's a safe environment for, for our young people.
Yeah, you don't want any kind of bull in or anything.
I had two comments, I guess. Uh, we kind of hit the first one, I guess. We, we got very clear rules posted. Everybody knows what would be considered an offense and what isn't. I assume the lifeguards are all trained, like, these are the policies. If somebody's breaking them, you know, that's an offense. And then I guess, which I, I'm pretty sure there's a big placard at the pool, and then like you guys were mentioning, a pop-up online, right? And then, secondly, I guess, does the system have a way to track whether somebody's had an offense? Like, how do we know if, or is it just gonna be on memory? Like, this person's got two offenses. This is their third.
We talked about that, I think, in their system, where they have your information. The goal was to input it there. And so if you were to scan their, their pass, you could just go in and see that, oh, they've got one offense, or they've got two. Um, or to keep track of it in a binder, because I don't know what the capabilities are online. I don't know if they can put it in that system. I don't know.
Yeah, and then.
But to document it somewhere so that they could just quickly go look and say, yep, this is that person's number of offense.
Uh, I don't know how relevant this is, but this is obviously only going to be effective with people who have memberships, right? Not people who are paying per day?
No, the goal would be daily as well, so they would keep track, name, information. It's hard, because you don't have a picture of that.
Kind of relies on somebody to remember somebody's face when they're coming in and, and out of the pool, though, right? But I don't know how, how you'd do it any better, but.
I mean, I think, I think, and I wasn't at the parking board, parking rec meeting, but I know from just going to the pool as much as we do, I mean, there are probably five to 10 kids who are frequent flyers, who are there at the pool every day. And a lot of times, those are the kids who are gonna be most problematic. So I think in those cases, this would work fine. You're absolutely right. You know, it's, it's when you're getting a day pass for somebody, you know, they come very situationally, it'd be harder to enforce. But I think if you could eliminate those five issues, you know, by telling those kids, hey, here's the rules, I think that would probably cut back on this by 75% frankly.
I assume this is better than what we had before, so that's a step in the right direction, so.
Well, I mean, if that's what parking rec feels like.
Yeah, it was one less offense before. I don't think we ever, I don't feel like there was anything about never being allowed back in that year. I don't think that was, I think that was the biggest change from the fourth offense. You're done. Yeah, that was added in.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the new, uh, Casson Aquatic Center Reprimand Policy.
Thanks, Rand. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, on to number four, the council action sheet for the A and A sidewalk clarification for the Batuminus coverage.
Uh, including your package, you've got some information from the, uh, the meeting that was held. We didn't have a quorum, so these are recommendations, but they're not a, not an official policy discussion that the, uh, the planning is willing had. Um, but you can see the three items, Mr. Granzi came in, and, uh, we had a good conversation with him, I think, and, and Ian, you can, uh, speak to it, too. But, um, you know, we want to make sure the code's enforced to the greatest degree that it has, within the flexibility that we need. That was, uh, something that the, the members discussed, uh, maybe trying to increase some of the flexibility through, uh, staff feedback, um, on some of our policies there. There was additionally supposed to be a discussion on screening. We did talk about screening. Uh, we weren't able to finalize anything or to have the public hearing that night. Um, but we actually ended up being a positive, because the board members wanted to add in, um, you know, screening to the landscaping discussion. So I think that we actually will add that in, so it'll be even a better, uh, product for, for the public hearing in March. Um, so looking at Batuminus for all parking areas, and some signage, as you can read there, um, putting a fence that's at least six feet tall with at least 50% opaqueness, connecting into Lot 1, where there is some fencing, um, covering Lots 2 and 3, and then recording a sidewalk easement on Lot 1 to allow for us to, uh, put that on the property, so that there is a transfer of the property in the future. Um, you know, when we feel that it's necessary to put that sidewalk in, then it will be put in.
Okay.
I think, I'd just clarify, when it says all parking areas, that, that means for on-street vehicles, because obviously they've got a lot of area where they got equipment parked.
Sure.
Or sitting that we don't expect them to pave, because.
That's for the street.
Because they don't want to destroy.
Yeah, I think the, the idea is all employee parking or all vehicle parking, not tractors. We talked about that to a great degree, where they have tracked vehicles, which they want to keep them on gravel, because otherwise it'll just wreck the Batuminus, and I think that's fair.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Paul. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to the administrator's report.
Um, a couple of items from the state. So state legislative session started this week, so they're, uh, they're into it, and this, uh, Senator Nelson was here for a, uh, sort of a meet and greet, a good downtown hall meeting she had, and had a lot of people from, uh, the public talking about a couple of different issues, but, uh, she sort of clarified. She said she, this is kind of a fix-it session. That's the way she calls it, because there are a lot of things that were, a lot of legislation was passed last year. We're starting to see those effects of that, so some things that need to be tweaked. Um, you know, the, the pull tab legislation. I know some folks from the Legion were very upset about that. Um, some of the marijuana things, there're gonna have to be some big tweaks there before they actually start issuing licenses, um, which, that's something that we'll probably need to talk about as a, as a council at some point in the future, um, whether we actually want to look at applying for anything through that, uh, program. Um, but one of the interesting ones that's coming out of this is local tax authority, uh, board. So, uh, we've talked about sales tax in the past. Just wanted to give you a little bit of feedback on what it looks like the state may be moving towards. The way it works right now is that you have to get legislative approval first for a sales tax, and then it has to be approved on November or a, a regular general election ballot, so typically November, but you probably could put it in August on the primary, too. Um, and then it has to go back again for a council approval, so that's kind of the process right now. It has to be for very specific projects that are related to greater regional, uh, effect. It's not supposed to be like a street reconstruction for a street road or a regular city street. So included in there, I have kind of the items where they're, they're recommending that the, uh, legislature should allow to bypass that legislative process, including libraries, part of a regional library system, athletic complexes, community centers, convention centers, airports, parks and trails. And the parks and trails is probably where we would see any kind of impact. I think generally speaking, I'm not planning, I certainly hope the council isn't planning on building any convention centers anytime soon. Uh, I feel like that might be above our, we'll let Rochester handle that. They've got a very nice convention center, right? Um, but I know that some communities do use them for parks and trails, and if we were going to do a larger park complex, for example, with ball fields, multiple ball fields, we would, and we want to fund it that way. I think that's something we would look at. But anyway, just, uh, wanted to give you a, a heads up on that. Um, fire hall update? Fire hall is moving forward. Um, so I'm, I'm very pleased with the progress. They're ahead of schedule. Um, we're on track potentially for an early summer opening, as opposed to late summer, so with this warm weather, it makes sense. They've got a lot of stuff done. Um, if you haven't had a chance to go in there and you'd like to take a tour of it right now, I'd be glad to take you in. Otherwise, Beth is there, too. She's there a couple of days a week there. Um, the ICS foreman, I'll take you for a tour. It looks really good. Uh, we're on, we're on budget also, which is really exciting, even though we've had a couple of, uh, things added. We, we had cameras added. Um, that's part of the project that wasn't in there before. Um, so, and you know, you can see in there, we've got, you know, good projects moving forward. Uh, got some good coverage in the newspaper. Um, I talked a little bit about that housing grant program that we'll be going for. Um, priority setting. I know I emailed that out to council. Appreciate, uh, a couple of people come back to me with their priorities. Um, so this is something I'd like to try and get the three to five priorities. We've kind of completed a lot of the, the big projects that were on our radar over the last five years, um, with 57 and the water tower, the fire hall. So it's, it's a good opportunity for us, uh, just to kind of reset that. So if you can, uh, email me with any questions, or if there's three to five items that you feel like are, you know, good priorities for us to kind of start on, um, let me know. We could talk about it at our next meeting, otherwise we'll probably have it on their discussion for our work session. It's a good work session topic, too. Uh, ED reports, you've got that there, and then, uh, I've got a couple of other items in your packet. Um, so if you take a look, you can see that, uh, we've got, um, capacity reports for this year. You'll remember last year, we negotiated with some of our purchase group partners for some capacity for the electric season. Uh, we worked with Fairfax, Springfield, Sleepy Eye, and also with Kenyon. Um, this year, the forecast is that the market should be, um, better positioned in terms of capacity. So I'm not anticipating buying for, for all four seasons. It's a seasonal auction again this year. So our big gap is in the summer, because our peak load goes up to 11 megawatts, and we only have 2 megawatts of firm capacity. So that's where our big disconnect is. In the fall and winter, it's not nearly as bad. So I'm focusing on the summer season this year, which the nice thing about that is, um, it'll help us control costs even a little bit more, hopefully, if we are covered in that season. So we are talking to those folks again. Wanted to include this, just so you know, this is a short-term fix. You know, buying capacity on the market, the price is going up, and because of the way the market is going, you know, for example, you're familiar with Sherco, the coal plant's done. So in the MISO market, in the mid-continental market, we're fortunate that there's a nuclear plant in Michigan that the state shipped in some money, and they kicked it back on again. And that'll be bringing firm capacity back into MISO. Otherwise, you know, the trend is that the, the gap between available capacity and the need is going to be smaller and smaller, and I'm expecting, you know, this year we'll be okay, possibly next year, but then the market will be short and the price will spike. So we're, we're tracking that quite a bit. Um, just wanted to include that. And that'll be a big topic of our, our work session, as well as the electric system. I know that, uh, supervisor Nelson, myself, have been working on a number of projects there. Um, also included in your packet, you've got, um, the financials. And these are preliminary. These are not audited. As you're all aware, our audit will be later this summer. Um, we do have the, uh, tax settlement completed. Um, there will still be some tweaks to this, but, uh, in there, we do have, you know, the revenues and expenditures for the general fund, the EDA, the library, um, and then our utilities. And I'm pleased that overall, the financial performance of our public utilities in Casson was, was very good. The return on revenue, uh, it ranges between, you know, nine and, uh, 12%, which is a good number for us, especially with the debt profile that we're looking at. Um, so overall, um, take a look at that. If you have any questions, let me know. As I said, it's not, this is not 100%. There'll be a number of general entries the auditors will recommend, where we move funds kind of between areas. But, um, you will see a spike in revenue in the general fund, and that has a lot to do with the street project up at 16th Street. So last year, the city was funding all those costs for that street project, so we saw a large expenditure. And now this year, we're seeing that, that money from the MSA dollars kick back in, and the money from our grant kick back in. So that's why it's, it, you know, showing a large positive fund balance is good, but it's a little disingenuous, because a lot of that money is money that's one-time money, that's covering costs that we had the previous year. So just so you're aware, that's kind of how it, how it went with that. Um, as I said, otherwise, I'm, I mean, I'm glad to take any questions and glad to get these numbers in your hands. In fact, today was the first day I had a chance to review them, too. So I did a, a good review this afternoon, and, uh, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction there. So audit field work will start in March, and then I'm hoping, our audit will be a little later this year, but I'm hoping by June 1st, we'll have our audit, so.
Good. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Tim, I was, I was hoping maybe to get a little more detail on the, um, the fire hall. You note here the current contingency is sitting at 297, but you're saying there's some things that aren't included. Um, you know, what kind of amount significance are those things?
Well, a good example with fire hall, as I mentioned, was, uh, cameras.
Right.
So originally in the bid, there were no cameras, uh, exterior cameras or interior cameras. Um, and the fire department requested, and we reviewed a proposal from, uh, is it ITC or something like, ETC?
E, E, ETC.
ETC. Um, basically, it's a camera company, and, um, we're gonna have, the idea is to have cameras in the classroom, cameras in the kitchen, because if there's damage from a party or something like, we want to be able to know who it is, and then having cameras on the exterior just for tracking if there's damage to the building. So that's about $30,000 add.
Okay.
So that's something that'll eat into that contingency, because it wasn't budgeted.
And that's, that's not included in the 297?
That's right, because it hasn't been paid out yet.
Understood.
Um, so there are a couple of other items that, um, smaller change orders. We've had a number of doors that have changed, materials changed. Um, we've had a lot of pluses, too. We've cut back on a number of things, so that's helped the contingency number.
Okay.
You know, for example, if you go over there, you'll see that on the front of the fire hall, there's a little bit different style of garage door than there is on the back. On the back, it's more of just a large, standard door, and originally in the design, they had kind of the, the doors with windows on both sides. And after reviewing it, saying, well, frankly, people are gonna see the front, that is where the cost should be, because it's much more expensive to have those garage doors that have the wind, the big, large windows, and, and, so we went to a, a little bit. Still a very effective product. It works just fine. It just saves a little bit of cost, so. So we've seen a little bit, right now, we're ahead of, we actually have more, uh, deducts than we have.
Do the trucks go out the front anyway? The ones with the glass?
Typically, they do, yeah. That's right.
Okay.
All trucks should pull out.
I thought there was discussion about having windows there, so you could kind of see before, anyway. Um, okay, so we're expecting 30, maybe a little bit more, out of that 297 yet. Um, what did that contingency start at, if you recall?
Started at $300,000.
So we've only, oh, wow, so we've only spent $2,500.
Because we've had crediting deducts, that number's actually at above $200,000 below. So yeah, no, I mean, I'm really pleased with how far we've been able to really hold them to feed to the.
Does that number include the interest that our, our bonds have been sitting in, so that?
The interest actually, if you look in the fire department, you'll see a different line for interest.
Okay, because I, I remember when we were talking about funding this, we were like, we're gonna put this money in this account, in that interest.
Yeah, the total bond proceeds are in the 4M fund, so that's where it's sitting right now.
Yeah.
And that accrues each month. They pay on a monthly basis, and so, I mean, my hope is to be, at the end of this project, to be able to return money into the debt service fund from the, the bond proceeds that we had.
Excellent, excellent.
Cross your fingers, but that's kind of where we're at, so.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tim.
You bet.
Um, anything, Brandon? Nope, okay. Uh, personnel, a couple of things for the fire department. Um, we have Brandon Charlesstrom coming back from a leave of absence, so entertain a motion to accept him back from his leave of absence.
Motion to approve.
You do have a second?
That's okay.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a leave of absence from the fire department for Dustin Thorson. I believe that's till May. So I'm entertaining a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Um, now we have, is, is there any other comments on, I'm gonna jump ahead to correspondence before we close the session. Okay. Uh, we're gonna go to closed session for two closed sessions. Um, one for a land, possible land sale, and one for an update on union negotiations.
Our ED is always recorded.
So they'll both be recorded separately. We'll start and stop the meeting, so we have two separate closed sessions before we open the meeting back up. So at this time, we're gonna close the meeting, and thank you for coming tonight. We'll see you next time. Thank you. We'll close the meeting now.